I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of December. And our first item of business is to accept or modify the agenda, and I believe there's a suggestion to move Aaron from Spear Financial up to just behind the public comment item. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that modification?
So move.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none will require roll call vote in these remote attendance circumstances. So oh, well, I'm jumping, I'm jumping ahead of things. So let's go ahead and approve the agenda. Roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We have the other little bit of business to do, namely to suspend our remote attendance policy pursuant to Illinois Public Act 101-0640 due to the COVID crisis. Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the point? Hearing none, again, a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So we have now done the first two items, namely, and takes us to public comment. And I do not see anyone here seeking to make public comment. Are you aware of anyone, Tim?
None at all. Michael.
Okay, I believe I can see the gallery view fits everybody in, and I don't see anyone else online either. So and as I understand it, there are no staff introductions tonight, so we can move now to item Roman numeral seven under old business, item A, consideration and action ordinance 2020-11, our bond ordinance.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'll just be very brief and give you an overview of the rollover sale. Again, my name's Aaron Gold, municipal advisor from Spear Financial. Thank you very much for moving me up to the top of the agenda. I appreciate it. We held, I would like to review the results of the sale of the district's general obligation limited tax park bond series 2020. We held a competitive sale last Thursday where we received six bids. The low bid was a 0.6% from IMB NA Champagne, Illinois. The second place bid was a point seven from Hickory Point Bank. In total, the second through sixth place bids were all within 10 basis points of each other. So a very, very tight bidding from both local and then some of my other local banking partners as well. So a really, really strong sale for the district last week. A little bit about the structure of the issue. We anticipate closing in two weeks on December 22. It's a one-year issue with the final maturity on December 15 of 2021. And these are your rollover bonds, general obligation, limited tax. So general obligation refers to the fact that it's paid for by a property tax, but that they are limited or constrained by two factors. The first factor is the district's non-referendum debt capacity. And that says how much of this type of obligation can you issue in total? And then the second constraint on these non-referendum GO bonds is the district's debt service extension base, which is a levying capacity, which caps how much the district can raise in property tax revenue each year to pay the principal and interest one due. So when we received the favorable final interest rate of 0.6% from IMB, we were able to increase the issue size $11,630 to $863,535 to fully utilize the district's 2020 levying capacity or debt service extension base. Proceeds from this issue after costs will generate $852,435 to support the district's annual capital program. And a little bit more about this interest rate of 0.6%. Last year, we had five bidders with the low bid being a 1.69% from Hickory Point Bank. So that is a decline of 109 basis points. This was a very strong sale. On average, I've seen our rollovers come down 90 to 100 basis points year over year, just because we are in a generally lower interest rate environment. Therefore, recommend that the bonds be awarded to IMB National Association Champagne, Illinois at the revised price of $863,535 and a net interest rate of 0.6%. As always, it's been a pleasure working with Katie and Tim on this issue. If you have any questions at all, I'd be more than happy to help. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions after that detailed introduction to what we're dealing with this evening?
I guess I just wanted to comment that it's always a pleasure working with Aaron, and we appreciate the work that Spear Financial does for the district every year. And sorry, I didn't get a chance to do an introduction for you, but Aaron is is a great team member to have on our financial team.
Thank you very much.
Well, from a board member's perspective, I would also say that the service we've received from Spear Financial and Aaron here is is a very comforting thing because these are high stakes choices for the board. And to know that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed is very important.
Thank you.
I move we award the low bid on bonds to IMB NA with an interest rate of 0.6%.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we must do again a roll call vote here, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. That carries unanimously, a four zero vote. And having awarded the bid, we need then to adopt our bond ordinance. Is there a motion to do that?
I move.
Go ahead.
So I move to adopt bond ordinance 2020-11, authorizing the issuance of $863,565 of general obligation limited tax park bonds, series 2020 of the Urbana Park District.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this point? Hearing none, again, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so that passes unanimously with the four commissioners who are in attendance tonight. So thank you very much again, Aaron, for joining us this evening. And hope you enjoy your long drive home tonight.
Yes. I have to say that the remote meetings have have made for a faster year or fall without less travel, which is nice, but I hope everyone stays healthy and safe. And I do look forward to hopefully seeing you next year in person. So be well.
Us too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that's moving on then to the next item on the agenda. It's the Uptack Report. We had a printed version of the report in our board packets. I do not see Cedric here to make one in person. Is there anything, an answer that you wanted to add to that?
No, it was essentially this, it was a more detailed presentation than the one Gabe gave us on the KRT. I mean, he did a very, very good job.
Okay, no further questions or comments on the Uptack Report, then it's time for us to move on to our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening, our approval minutes of the November 3 study session, the November 10 regular board meeting.
You got a squirrel in there, Michael.
And acceptance of the three monthly reports. Yes, I have an unhappy dog out on outside who's I'm sorry about that. Approval of the monthly paid accounts payable and action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. And under our rules, it's the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action. Is there any such desire by any of the commissioners? Seeing no indication of that is someone prepared to make the motion that we accept all the items on the consent agenda, approve all the items on the consent agenda in omnibus fashion and and the receipt of those reports.
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and under our consent agenda rules, there's to be no discussion at this point. So we will do a roll call vote, starting with Roger. Muted. He did say aye, I believe. Okay.
Yes.
Meredith.
Aye.
And Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. So that two carries four zero with all the the four commissioners present. And that moves us on to the reports section.
All right, I think I'm up. So let me share my screen with you. Can you all see the fund balance report?
Yep.
Great. Okay, so the first report that I'll be sharing with you, well, first of all, tonight I'll be sharing with you the financial report for the month of November for the Urbana Park District. The first report I'll be sharing is called the Revenue and Expenditure Report. This report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period in this column, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the seven months ending in November 30, 2020. This first page, we call sum one at the park district. And this is all funds except for the capital improvement fund. So this is really just our operating budget. Revenues for this period were $9,280,000, which is an increase of $1,864,000 since October. Most of that is due to this $1.6 million in transfers in transfers in that I performed in November, which was transfers from the Recreation and Museum Fund into the General Fund. And most of that goes to paying our December bond payments. Some of it stays in the General Fund to help support operations of the district. But that's the reason for the reason that this total revenues increased by 1.8 million. The other was property taxes mainly. We got our sixth dispersment in the month of November. So the biggest difference between this year and last year has been in the earned revenue section, which is this fees line right here. You can see the last year's total fees earned for the entire year was just over a million dollars. But at this point in time of November 30, 2019, the district had earned $846,000 in fees last year, which is composed of program revenues and rental charges, which is about 712,000 more than at this same point this year. So although I would say we're lucky with the pandemic that we actually have earned $133,000 in earned revenues this year. So I think we've really made the best of it. And staff has gotten really creative with programming. We have been able to do some limited rentals. Of course, now that we've entered tiered three, we've had to ratchet that back down, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to continue our offerings as soon as the state restrictions let up. Moving down to the expenditure section. Expenditures for this period were $5,281,000, which is a change of $1,745,000 since October. And again, that was because you have the opposite effect of transfers out here. So whenever you have a transfer in, you have a transfer out, out of the other fund. So that's the majority of that increase. Let's see. So that's the first step. The transfers that we make from Recreation and Museum into General is the first step that we do in November. And then in December, you'll see next month, just to prepare you for what you'll see, we do a transfer from the General Fund into the Bond Fund for the amount of the amount that the General Fund needs to contribute to make our bond payments, which is $1,050,000. So you'll see that again next month as well. But just so that you know, that's the process that we do every year. We have a surplus after seven months down here. And that means that there is an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $4 million. And when I did an analysis of this number and I shared with Finance Committee last, on Friday last week, this fund balance increase at the end of the year, right now, this is done out that revenues exceed expenditures, is actually over a million dollars more than last year. So last year, we had an excess of revenues over expenditures of only about $3 million. It was actually more like 2.8 million. So we're in a better position financially than we were last year. And the main reason for that is our expenditures are so much less. So our revenues are about the same for this point in the year of November, but our expenditures are considerably less. And even though we haven't had those earned revenues, staff's done a really good job of keeping expenditures in check. Of course, we haven't had the expense of a lot of part-time staff because we haven't had all of our programs and facilities up and running. But even the things that we have been running, staff's been really good about working within the full-time staff load that we have and keeping other expenditures down. So I just wanted the board to have some reassurance there that on the operating budget side, we're we're doing considerably well for being in the middle of a pandemic. So I was pretty encouraged by that. I'm going to move on to sum two. This is just the Capital Improvement Fund. And feel free to interrupt if anybody has any questions. Shout them out. Sum two, revenues for this period were $84,000 and expenditures were $1,545,000. Expenditures exceed revenues, and this leaves a decrease in fund balance in the Capital Improvement Fund of $1,460,000. And that might sound bad, but remember, we have a budget to have a decrease in fund balance of $7.8 million this year because of all of the projects that we have outstanding. And we don't actually plan on spending all of that because that includes all of the bond funds from the series 2019A issue, but we will spend about half of it. So expect this number to continue to grow as a deficit in the Capital Improvement Fund because the only reason we have this money is to spend it. So the whole goal of this fund is to get down to a zero net fund balance eventually. Right now, there's $7 million. So we want to spend it all, and we want to spend it all on projects. So that's the goal of this fund. And you do see swings in increases and decreases in that fund balance over the years, depending on what projects are going on at the time. And finally, sum three, as those first two pages added up, this is a picture of the entire park district all on one page. And our ending fund balance at the end of November is $18,353,000. And following that are the three, the summary reports for our individual main working funds, which are the General Fund, the Recreation Fund, the Museum Fund, and the indoor pool, those four funds. Any questions about the Revenue and Expenditure Report? Hey. I'll move on to the Treasurers Report. This is the Treasurers Report. This is a report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, November 30, 2020. All 24 funds of the park district are represented with where the cash is invested for a grand total of note for November 30 of $18,181,358.09. Page two lists the first section lists amounts that the park district has in interest-bearing account. So of that $18 million, $16,885,000 is invested at some low rate. Bring Dottie's language back into here, since we're experiencing such low rates again. The next section lists interfund loans. There were no changes this period to interfund loans. And finally, the last page lists dispersment for the month of November. And we paid $1,073,000 in expenditures in the month. The most major category was in the Capital Improvement Fund where we made our second payment to Stark of around $600,000. And with that, I present the Treasurers Report to you for approval.
I move we accept the Treasurers Report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Again, in remote attendance, we must do a roll call vote on this, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that carries four zero.
Okay, lastly, I will touch on the areas in the capital budgets that had activity this period. So in the series 2019A budget, we had some activity on the one-way road system design. In the 2020 capital budget, we had expenditures on tribute trees. And in the Emerald Ash for Hazard Tree Work lines, we had a crane rental, and we did an oak wilt review, and those were paid out of this line. In the 2019 budget, there were expenses paid towards tribute trees and plaques. The Saline Rock Riffle Project had another payment. And down here in this section for Crystal Lake, both of these line items had activity towards the rehab project. In the 2018 budget, expenditures occurred on several replacement tribute trees that were paid for out of this line. Construction crew projects, this is the current working budget that Keith is using. And then again, down here, all of the bond money that we had available for the rehab project was spent out of this line. And in the 2017 budget, there was only activity on the rehab projects out of a couple of different lines. We had a small donation. And then down here in the contingency section. And now I believe Andy and Derek may have some capital project updates for you.
Yeah, I'm going to stick within Crystal Lake Park for the most part tonight, starting with the rehab project. Stark's been wrapping up punch list items throughout the site. There's still work on their end to complete at the boat dock and the ramp, along with the seating plaza off Broadway Avenue. Additionally, as part of the construction work around the district's sanitary district's bridge, ERA and UCSD did an evaluation of its current conditions and found some structural issues with the vault on the east side of the Interceptor Crossing. And that's preventing us from finishing off that resurfacing of the bridge as part of our rehab project. So Jake Wolf with ERA and Sanitary District are currently reviewing options to deal with that issue, but have not yet finalized a rehab or replacement plan at this point. Once that is selected, it will likely take some time to implement, and it may be something that gets pulled outside of the current rehab project's scope of work. So that is I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that on our dime?
No, this is all through that IGA that we had approved last winter. It's all money that they will send to us for it. We're just kind of the processor of it through our project.
Good. Thanks.
Um, so in that scenario where we have kind of a larger scope of a project that they're going to pull outside of our our individual rehab, the sanitary district would complete like a temporary solution that would then allow the bridge to at least reopen for pedestrians until they're able to complete that larger scale project independently in the future. So that additional work will likely need authorization for additional contingency funds on the project. So that may be something at the January meeting that we come to the board to request additional contingency. And that will allow that project to include the the bridge work for the sanitary district and then make sure that the district, the park district itself maintains an adequate amount of funding for our own rehab contingency needs for our individual project. We hope to learn more in the next couple of weeks. Moving to the Saline Habitat Enhancement project, the contractor, Semperfy, completed the final rock structure installations within the stream the week prior to Thanksgiving. Final funds have been received from IDNR, and that's through that transfer from US Fish and Wildlife. And the coming year, the contractor will continue to be at the site, maintain their landscaping, and then potentially do some additional plantings with any remaining contingency funds we have on the project. And I'll have a couple of pictures to show of the saline coming up. Last thing I wanted to mention within Crystal Lake is our staff teams work on doing a master plan update. We've been working with Smith Group, who did the last plan in 2007. We had a site walkthrough just before Thanksgiving with them. They're updating that plan to include recently completed projects throughout the park as well as updating with projects that are planned in the coming years. As part of their scope, they're creating four different renderings. That's going to focus on the North Woods Pavilion Zone, which will feature a series of small picnic pavilions with a new open-air style pavilion as the replacement of the current structure. And then the ITEP Broadway Path and Bridge, which was the grant that we applied for in the end of October. They'll have a rendering of a potential new pedestrian bridge and an overlook that would be at the Nature Center going into Bucy Woods. And then their last rendering that they're going to have to us in the next week or so is going to show that former 901 site and amenities that may be added in that zone. So our staff team is going to continue to review the draft plan, and we intend to provide some opportunities for public input as well in the coming months. There's not any questions. I was going to show some pictures as usual tonight. See. Okay. So right now I'm showing some of the new rock structures on the saline. This is on the north side across from Cannonball Hill, a couple double rock deflectors. And you can see a portion of the rock toe here that was done last winter. And this is kind of the big section of what was completed last winter with the rock toe along the southern portion of the saline. My back's basically to Cannonball Hill from this vantage point. And then you can see the large riffle structure going across as well. Kind of updating on the rehab project. This is Keith's progress as of, I think, last Friday on the playground installation. And then this has been the main focus for Stark in the past couple of weeks. It's the stairs and ramp access to what will be the new boat dock. And then kind of a different vantage point looking kind of at the rock face, which I thought was kind of a cool look. Kind of looks like it's potentially just another outcropping almost the way it's layered like that. So you see the stairs come down, and then that ramp zigzags this way, and then comes down and will land here on the deck. And then the boat dock will come out approximately in this area again. And then here's a look of the plaza area off of Broadway. We have the colored concrete entry, and we did the colored concrete with a a relief to make it look like natural stone. Which then I kind of took a close-up picture here, so you can see how that turned out. I was very happy with. And then finally, I had a few images for our recently awarded museum grant. We showed these at the Finance Study Group last Friday as well, but for the full board as a refresher, here's the outdoor pool, the Nature Center. Project's going to include a rain garden, parking for an additional 26 spaces. Uh, parking for an additional twenty-six spaces. Uh, we've included solar lighting. And then accessible pathways that would connect towards the walkway to the nature center. Um, to a new pavilion, which should be the new base for, uh, nature camp and then connection to the nature playscape. And then here's a look of that pavilion, which we're calling the learning, outdoor learning pavilion, I believe. It's planned to fit approximately eight picnic tables, which I think is about the size of the Prairie Play. Uh, pavilion, open space, and then we have, uh, structure for restrooms, water fountains, uh, storage, uh, fireplace. And then we've included the ability to close off with, uh, like a canvas type material. Um, this is gonna be an all-season, um, pavilion that the nature center staff can use for their programming and environmental education. And then here's a look of the layout of that building itself, the large storage, uh, room and that, uh, restroom as well. And fireplace is something that's gonna be, um, open just for staff, um, use, uh, rental use. It wouldn't be something that would be open. It would have a closure and, and be locked, uh, normal course of the day, other than for staff usage.
Why are there two sinks in the restroom?
There's actually two, um, toilets as well.
Ah.
It's a multi-user. I think for the day camps primarily, I mean, this, it's what we're focusing this program use with that they might have, you know, multiple kids in there at once. Unless there's any questions, I'm happy to go over anything else.
Andy, I thought I might just mention, uh, the, the crane rental that Katie highlighted in the capital, um, bill review. Uh, the good news on that is that our, our, our trees all tested negative for oak wilt. Uh, you may, uh, we had, uh, one positive. Uh, this is the third time, uh, since I've been with the park district, uh, that we've had an oak wilt, uh, in, in Crystal Lake Park and it's a test one came in the past and this is, uh, appears to be the same. We were especially nervous about this one because the, uh, impacted tree was, uh, surrounded by other trees, uh, and, and if, um, folks are watching at home. Oak wilt, uh, can transfer from tree to tree through root grafting. Uh, and so part of the treatment involves trenching, uh, to uh, remove any sort of root grafting potential or connection, uh, between infected tree and adjacent trees. That, that, that trenching usually takes place at a distance based upon the size of the tree and, uh, in theory, all these trees could have grafted because of the, the tight cluster. So we're very concerned about potential losing this growth. So we took it very seriously. We brought in an expert, uh, Mike Brunk, uh, former receiver Van Arboris, uh, now with the Department of Natural Resources, a state forester. Um, he, he brought in a specialist, uh, Dr. Fred Miller, who works with oak wilt, uh, to examine the trees. We also worked with Arbor Smith locally. Um, had a crane and a drone out there to look for suspect tissue that we sampled and got tested and, uh, everything came back negative. So um, a, a big sigh of relief, uh, but we'll continue to watch that area closely and, uh, there's, there's still an outside chance that, that the test could have been inaccurate or that we might have missed some infected tissue. So we're entirely out of, out of, out of the woods, but we continue to monitor that area, uh, closely. The good news right now.
I just have one question. So I was out there on Sunday and by the way, it looks phenomenal. Um, but there were like small patches of, of, of still, um, honeysuckle, like clustered around trees on, on, I'm, I'm curious why we, are they, are they being removed later? Are we leaving them there? It was just struck me as odd. So I'm just.
Plan is to remove them later, Meredith.
Okay. Good news.
One, um, you know, around those mature trees that were preserving the oaks, uh, we didn't wanna, uh, do any grading, uh, and so um, wanted to keep that ground condition as it is, but two, we, we removed, uh, an awful lot of the shrub layer on the lake, uh, that's habitat. Uh, and so, uh, structurally, you know, keeping some of that, that invasive honeysuckle on place provides that, that structural habitat. Until the ninety-plus shrubs that we planted around the lake can, can mature. So what we're planning on coming back in, in, I'm saying year two, uh, maybe three. Uh, as those native shrubs establish and removing the honeysuckle and, and seeding under those oaks, but not grading them uh, around those oaks. Eventually, you know, we anticipate that like all trees will eventually lose those oaks and so we, we grade those areas out, uh, to be consistent with the rest of the shoreline.
Thank you.
Derek, is the, uh, oak wilt specific to a particular group of oaks or is it just broad-scale quercus?
That, that was the frightening thing is that with red oak, uh, it dies almost immediately, within a year, uh, very rapid.
Yeah.
Uh, but white oaks can, can hold it for a long time and the positive was a white oak. So it could have been uh, could have had it for a while and been sort of a, a typhoid Mary of sorts, you know, spreading disease to, to other trees. And so that's why we were especially.
A super spreader.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions for, on my, uh, capital budget report? Hearing none, then, uh, let's move on to the executive director's report.
Good evening, everybody. Um, starting off, hopefully you got a chance to look at the, our You Belong Here Report. We did some additions to, uh, try to indicate a little more information in the introduction of the report. Basically just to signify items there and why they would be placed there. We're open to feedback if you have other ideas or would like to see other descriptions or, uh, any other sort of approach. We're, we're open. Again, we're trying to fine-tune the report. Our main interest is really to get the public to be maybe more aware of some of the actions that we're focused on and, um, some of the outcomes that we're working toward. So again, please give us feedback and, uh, we can adjust that as we go. Um, moving on to the other elements in the report, just wanted to thank all the staff that worked very hard on the Turkey Trot, the virtual um, event we had this year. There was a lot of participation. I also wanted to, uh, point out or let the board know that there was a number of people that still came to Crystal Lake Park for the event, uh, last Tuesday before Thanksgiving, Janet called me and said, hey, what do you think? Should we talk to ops about closing the park road? What, what if a bunch of people show up and just wanna do the walk? And I immediately kind of could picture that happening and said, absolutely. So I called Derek and we talked about it and he was willing to personally go over and close the gate in the morning. And it was a good thing because we had a number of people, about seventy-five or so, that came throughout the morning. Uh, so we just wanted to create a safe walking experience for all those folks and then the park was opened after. So, um, Turkey Trot continues to thrive and, uh, we look forward to doing it in, in person next year, um, with all things, uh, looking positive. Um, I think, wanted to mention, we did get some new paperwork today from DNR on the museum grant and he just went over the elements there. Um, so Kara's working on those and we'll ultimately get the final project agreement, get that signed, sent off. We can start the work. So there's probably a few months of paperwork and back and forth approvals, um, per usual. Today we had a site visit to the Perkins Road Park Site. As you know, we're working on a modified master plan for the site. So that we could in hopes, open perhaps in the spring of twenty twenty-one as at least a walking site. And I think today was a good example because we had staff from all the various groups, you know, representing the efforts on the master plan. And, you know, it's very easy to want to have all the things that are ideal in place so that every visitor has a great experience. And we're just trying to remind the board. You know, we're trying to start out, our main motivator is open places that people can walk it out and enjoy nature. Um, we believe even with a vaccine over this next year in twenty twenty-one or even beyond. People like to walk. They like to get out in nature. It's a great stress reliever. Um, having spaces where you feel open and, you know, spread out and kind of free in nature really is points to the Perkins Road Site. So we're very, very excited. It's very beautiful. Um, it's, it's gonna be very interesting, but the, you know, the basic amenities would be able to um, create a limited addition of parking, you know, to support more visitors. Um, creating walking trails down in the lower areas, having some level of interpretation or at least understanding of what you're seeing, maybe the, some of the, um, rules or recommendations when people are visiting um, in that area. So we're excited. We're working again with the, uh, Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District. They, um, you know, certainly own the property and are very enthused about what we've done there. They've been a partner in the restoration. So again, we're continuing to work on that and we'll have more information as we go. And I think it's heading in the right direction. Just wanted to remind all of our viewers or anybody that would be at home that couldn't join us. We had our annual Champagne Urbana Special Rec meeting, uh, last week. That was our annual meeting and we learned about all the uh, wonderful programs and activities and workarounds staff did for, uh, the main intense part of the COVID up to, up to current. And we learned more a little about the, um, renovation of the old Leonard Center, now called the, uh, bicentennial building, which will be the new home for, uh, Champagne Urbana Special Rec. So we're very excited about that. That'll have adequate space for, uh, small gym, for, uh, recreation and competition offices. Um, some, uh, general programming spaces, uh, some sensory rooms, restrooms. Um, so it's gonna be a really nice addition. We look forward to that. Uh, Corky and I and staff continue to work on Brookens. We'll be, um, meeting with the Brooklyn staff to talk about extending our lease, what that would look like. Want to make sure that as that, um, runs out, I believe it's July, Corky, correct me if I'm wrong. In, uh, twenty twenty-one that we have, uh, lease to lease in place, um, to carry over until we are ready to hopefully move into our new health and wellness facility. So as you can imagine, it'll take a number of years for the fundraising and the construction, all of that effort. So we do need to have something in place.
June first, Tim?
June first. Thank you. I knew it was summer. Um, so we want to have something in place. We'll be coming back to, um, on that, uh, shortly. Andy mentioned the master plan for Crystal Lake. Um, that's all moving in the right direction. One thing we might want to consider, staff talked about is for the public portion or any open houses, if we could maybe hold on to that and wait until we might be able to meet back in person or create more safe um, opportunities for people to come out and make comment and learn about what's gonna happen, um, in the park. We just think that would create a better dialogue, create more opportunities for people to find out. Um, what subtle changes and a few different changes, particularly the park road that, that we're making there. Uh, let me see, looking at my notes here. Um, we did have a discussion with staff and then it carried over to the finance team on last Friday. But I wanted to share it with the board. One of the questions I had is, you know, uh, and Katie presented our, uh, financial status. Um, at the beginning of this meeting and her report indicated we're in, you know, a reasonably good position. But one of the things we needed to know is, should we be assuming we're moving toward regular types of programming and activities? Anticipate that we'll need to hire our staff, get, you know, all those kind of, uh, winter, early spring things started. And I think the feeling was, we need to do that. You know, we don't know the exact rollout on vaccines and how that'll all work, but we certainly wouldn't want to be caught short where people are ready and able to come back and we're not ready. So we're going into it with that assumption. Certainly as we learn new information or see how things actually go, we can adjust. But we kind of need to go into the start of twenty twenty-one, looking at our budgets, what are the startup things we need to do? Uh, all the tasks we need to get at least lined up and ready to go, start implementing them. And then again, take our cues from how things are going, you know, in the community and across the country. Um, so we're actually excited about that and, um, hope to see that, you know, we'll have programs and facilities, um, returning at least at some level. And so we want to be ready for that. Did want to mention.
Can I interject here?
Please do.
Part of, as part of that discussion, um, while we're doing okay financially at the moment, in fact, uh, perhaps even a little better than a year ago, despite the, uh, disruptions. Um, there are gonna be some financial risks in starting up again and not knowing exactly how many people are gonna show up and be paying fees and so on. And at least in the discussion that we had in the finance group, I think the general consensus was you gotta start it up at some point and take some risks. And so it's important for us to squirrel away, um, a little bit of a cushion in order to be able to take some of those chances. So I hope the rest of the board will, will think about that, uh, philosophy, but that is certainly the way that discussion drifted.
Yes, and thank you for that addition, Michael, because it was the, kind of that risky, uh, part of the venture that we were really focusing our time and attention. Um, you know, it's easy just, uh, not easy, but one approach could be just we're not doing anything until we know everybody's coming back. While you could do it that way, that might take a long time, uh, to get there. So the idea of we did try to get back into operations, yet people weren't coming and we had staff hired and, you know, the numbers were down. Certainly we would not maybe reach our potential on revenue. Um, but I think we all came to agreement that, you know, getting in that position, being ready for that and maybe, um, experiencing some challenge or some loss is part of that recovery. So, um,
Are.
focused on that.
Are we also, I guess, just thinking about like prioritizing things such as, like say, summer day camps where kids are outside and where we, we've, we've seen at least in the schools that we've, for the most part, been able to keep COVID. I mean, I shouldn't say we, we've seen that Champagne and Urbana have had different approaches, but other areas were able to open and where there's like a, a very high need versus let's say fitness courses where, um, I was just thinking about community need and, and just that young kids seem to need more at the moment. Um, I don't know.
If I could just interject. A minute. I was just gonna say, I, I, really what our approach is from the recreation standpoint is we were, we were successful in phase four, bringing back some level of programming. Um, we didn't do a lot of the, uh, I guess, kids-type programming in our facilities because we were thinking we were gonna be serving the school district. Um, our kind of thought process at this moment is looking to see, you know, how many kids can we accommodate at camps? In the phase four mode. And if we can do better than that, then that's great. But I think our, our first thought is what's, what's planned for a phase four mode like we were doing and be able to expand as the COVID situation expands. Does that, does that help kind of give you a?
Yeah, yeah. And I guess I was specifically thinking of rec. There's many dimensions, but yeah, that, I think that's helpful and that makes, that makes sense. And I support Michael, what you were saying earlier about being willing to take a, a, a risk in terms of o- opening it, a financial risk, not in terms of, um, you know, that, that we may have to invest and then pull back and lose money on programs, but at least we were trying to be agile and nimble and, uh, respond to needs.
Yeah, and I, I think one of the, well, obviously one of the big things is the pool, right? The outdoor pool. Um, Rand Tool did open their pool last year and I think they were somewhat successful. I didn't hear anything negative about it. Um, I'm not gonna say that we're gonna open the door for a full crowd like we've always done, but I think at some point you gotta be thinking and planning ahead because we can't just hire a hundred and thirty staff and train them and, in a month if things clear up. So I think we have to start, you know, come January, February, be thinking, you know, where are we with, you know, what we're hearing about COVID and, and start planning accordingly.
Yeah, and one additional aspect of, of that conversation and taking some chances is you, you can't just turn on the switch and expect all the part-time staff that you, you know, had made, perhaps have have worked year after year, uh, in some of these programs to suddenly be there and available. If, if we keep putting them off and putting them off and putting them off, uh, we run a real risk to the long-term health of, of some of these programs.
I think one of the things we don't need to be told is that, um, the situation moving forward at this point is gonna be, I think, faster-moving and more confusing in some ways than it, than it has been over the last several months.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering in terms of lead time, um, how much lead time are you gonna need on a thing like camp? Or I, I, I know on the pool, um, but how, how will that, how will that factor in? Because it may change on a dime, i- i- two weeks, three weeks and, and suddenly we've got a lot more vaccinated people and I'm scared about January, quite frankly. Uh, I, I don't think it looks good. But by February, March, I don't know. Um, it, it, it may be a different, maybe a different situation.
Yeah, I, I agree, Roger, and I think that's primarily why. Yeah, I agree, Roger. And I think that's primarily why I'm saying we're, we're planning like there's going to be some sort of program. We just don't know how big each program would be. You know, until we get a couple of months down the road, but we're going in with the thought that we're going to have some sort of camp. We're going to have some sort of sports programs and aquatics programming. So we're, we're going forward with that notion that we do have a little history with phase four. So what, what's built, plan for that and build if we can as times change.
That, that sounds good. And I, I think there's, there's the, the probability here that you're going to make some wrong decisions on this. And if that happens, I, I, I don't anticipate the board is going to jump down your throat.
I hope not.
Because this is.
Most of us are too old to jump.
I, it's, it's a very, very fluid situation and you guys have handled it very well thus far.
Well, and let me just interject. I mean, it's a wrong decision. I mean, we're in a circumstance here where you analyze as much as you can where you are at the moment and you make the best decision you can. And it may not turn out for the best, and that doesn't mean that your decision process was wrong.
Right. Thanks for clarifying. I appreciate both of those statements because I think what when Roger mentioned confusion, it's seems a little easier when you're closing things than when you're trying to open or partially open or partially accommodate. And also you might be taking some criticism or there might be some uncertainty. So it may be challenging on the way back up, but nonetheless, just knowing that decision's been made and we're going to pursue it in an affirmative way and do our best to read the cues and, you know, work with our budgets and staff. I think actually gives us a clear direction of where we need to be. So we look, look forward to that. And I'm sure we'll be talking monthly as we go about that. So stay tuned. The last thing I wanted to mention is we've been working for several, quite a few months now with CCS, that's the professional fundraising group that we have hired to lead us in our endeavors to raise money for the health and wellness facility. Our last meeting, I think, is scheduled, our last touch point is on December 22nd. And one of the things the staff team has been working on is a recommendation on extending that to give us a January, February, March window in working with CCS. In our contract, you know, we're paying about $9,000 a month. They've offered to reduce their fee structure to 5,000 a month. And that would allow us to use the remaining scheduled dollars, about 15,000 that were in the original contract scope for an extension. So staff would recommend that we do that. We work with CCS to get that into place. That would get us through March. Certainly a couple of factors. One, we're pretty much in the thick of our fundraising critical discussions. Two, Ellen will be retiring. Her last day is January 15th. So it'd be nice to have a little bit of fundraising, you know, staffing support in place, at least for the, this fundraising effort. And that would get us at least to that point, we could figure out where, where we go after that. But I just wanted to recommend that we consider that. If the board would prefer, we could bring that proposal back in January, but it is within my ability to authorize that. And that's our recommendation tonight. Just wanted to make sure the board supports that idea, thinks it's a worthwhile expenditure. Or make other arrangements that you might have in mind. So hearing, if there's no other concern about that, we would work with them to get those extra three months into place and be working with the foundation and staff and the steering committee to take advantage of that. Beyond that, we probably would be out of at least that current contract resource would have to kind of look and see where we are. We'll be making those assessments as we go and probably can report later where we stand. But that probably that critical transition, we do need their help and it's been very productive so far. So that's, that's what I'd recommend. And that's the direction I would, I would like to see us go. That's all I had. I can answer any questions if there's questions about other topics or anything else in the parks and rec programs.
Yeah, Tim, I was looking at the, the Wade in the water and the swim 1922. And I wondered if that's a place where we could think about Meredith and my.
I'm glad you're, you're speaking up because I was going to put it in my comments later.
I'm, I'm thinking that this is a perfect place for third grade.
Swim lessons.
Swim lessons, yep. Just a thought that I just wanted to put, I just wanted to put it in there.
Gotcha.
It seemed to me to be going in the same direction.
Any other comments? All right. That's all I had, Michael.
All righty. Well, thank you much, Tim. A lot of meaty stuff there this evening. Moving on to the president's report. I don't have anything specific other than a review of upcoming meetings. We do have a January 5th study session scheduled as again, as a Zoom meeting to review our strategic goals. January 12 be our regular board meeting. The ever popular semi-annual review of past executive session minutes and recordings, executive session now. How we're going to do that in the cold of January is a bit of a challenge. And I, I don't know if we will have to punt on that till somewhat more balmy weather or not, but.
I, I have, I have a strategy that I thought we would try to employ. If you, the way that the city of Urbana has been doing it is they actually wind up, they have two Zoom links. They have their regular board meeting Zoom link. And then at the moment that the board votes to go into executive session, whoever's hosting the second need the other, the executive session meeting, email the link to the commissioners at that moment. The commissioners leave this meeting that they're in and they go and log into the executive session Zoom, have their, their Zoom, and then whenever they're finished, they come and rejoin the regular Zoom link. That's how the city of Urbana has been doing it. If we want to try it, there's only one executive session to even review from the last year, which was the last review of the executive session minutes. So, you know, it would be a good opportunity to test that, the waters out on that, depending on if we need to have any further executive session meetings in the coming months. So that my suggestion and recommendation is that we go ahead and try it out. Allison is going to be in charge of the second Zoom and making sure that the meeting's being recorded, that everybody gets admitted to the meeting, you know, she'll be the host and, and handle all of the emailing of the link and everything. So my suggestion is that we try that out. But it's at your purview if you want to punt it a little bit where our legal requirement is that we review minutes twice a year, but there's no actual schedule that says we have to do it in January.
Well, if, if it's relatively low stakes, I, I think I would be okay with, with doing it as an extra Zoom meeting. We do need to be careful if we're, if we're really reviewing highly sensitive stuff, whether we are comfortable with the, the online security of Zoom. I don't have any particular indication that they have issues. But we do need to, as a board, either reach a comfort level with that or find a different way to do it. So if, if you have thoughts on that matter, but tonight or, or later, please let us know.
I would just say, Michael, quickly, you have an option in Zoom, which would make sense to me where you can record, but only keep the audio and not the video. And so as long as we're using that option so that there's, there's not, I think, one, that's consistent. And, and two, I think as long as we have a password on the meeting. And if you're also another added layer, if you've got the waiting rooms set up, then I, I think we should be okay because Allison is controlling who's in an intent, in attendance.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm, I'm okay with it just to say that if we're following those things.
And you likewise, Roger?
Yeah. I have participated in meetings where there were breakout rooms. And that worked, that's a somewhat different thing, but that worked as well. It's very difficult to break into those, those situations.
Yeah, we talked about breakout rooms, but in this case with the two totally separate Zoom links, it's just almost seamless. I think that you won't even, you won't even be confused about which one to use because you won't even get the link until you've already voted to go into the meeting. So, you know, there might be a couple of minute delay while everybody gets organized, checks their email, gets logged into the meeting. But I, I think if that's the way the city's been working and it's been functional, that's what we talked to Jason about it. That's what he said they're doing. We talked to Stanford about it. He didn't see any reason why Zoom wouldn't be secure as long as like Meredith said, you're using the waiting room function, you're using the password protection. And then we'll work with Allison on the recording that we're obviously only keeping the audio recording. We don't need the video because Zoom, Zoom produces both. So.
And just to say that in the, in our president's report, we don't have the, we have a start time on the 12th at 7:00 PM for the meeting. But if there's an executive session, are we doing that prior to or after? I guess I just want to get clarity on that.
We typically would do it beforehand and Matt Deering would be present for that particular meeting to administer the usual, usual review.
Which means we would have to start a Zoom meeting, switch off to another one and then somehow come back to the original one if, if we would do it as we normally handle these things. I assume that is still doable.
But are we starting still at seven or would we start at 6:30 because of the executive session?
We, I think we'd start at 6:30. I will stay in that regular Zoom meeting the whole time. So, because I don't come to the executive session review. So I will initiate and begin and host the regular board meeting while Allison administers and hosts the executive session. So, and I won't leave once I've started. So you guys will leave and come back, but I'll be here the whole time.
Well, are, do any board members desire that it not be 6:30? That, but rather we'd start at seven. So I'm, I'm thinking everybody is okay with 6:30, but we do need to make sure we get that on our calendars. Okay. Okay, moving on. Then January 28th is the UPDEC meeting. The climate plan draft is going to be discussed there apparently, which we've already had some information on. And then at some point yet to be determined is the TIF and enterprise own meeting, but the, the city has not scheduled that yet apparently. So.
Michael, I was just going to add, I'd planned to reach out to the city to see if they have a date. Typically for many years, it was the first week of December and so I just don't know what their plans are, but I'll find out and report back.
Well, that's all I had as part of the president's report. Moving on to the liaison reports, the finance study group, we've already covered the vast majority of what was discussed at the finance study group last Friday. I would like to mention one other thing though, that has not come up, and that is that the renegotiation of the healthcare plan for the district has apparently gone quite well. And we're not going to be looking at a huge spike in that regard. So that was very welcome news for the long-term health of our budget. The UPD Policy Study Group, I, I anything to report there, Meredith?
We don't, we have not met, so nothing to report.
And Urbana Parks Foundation representative, Roger, do you have anything?
Not, not a lot to report. You know, they've finished up the, the campaign for the next century. And trying to figure out how to do their regular fundraising over the next year. We did talk some about the the health and wellness fundraising situation. And I think, I think all in all, pretty pleased with way that that's going. That's about it.
Any, any questions for Roger on? And moving on to the UPDEC Planning Study Group.
Yeah, we have, we have met and we won't be meeting again for another six months. So nothing to report.
All righty. Then moving on to old business. We've already done the item A under old business and we didn't remove anything from the consent agenda that would have come into old business. So we have finished all the old business. Takes us to Roman numeral eight, new business. And the first item there is action to approve ordinance 2020-12, abating the levy of property taxes pursuant to our alternate revenue source bonds.
We didn't do this last year because the bond ordinance didn't require it because of the timing of the bond issue. But we need to this year. So this, this year and every year from now on. We used to do this every year also for the 2010 and 2011 bond issues where we'd actually approved two separate abatement ordinances. But now that we have just one alternate revenue source bond issue, we only have to do the one ordinance. And the ordinance gets filed with the county and directs them to not levy taxes to pay this bond. So we do levy taxes to pay our rollover bond that you approved tonight. That one is a property tax levy, but the 14 million, 950,000 bond that we issued last year, we committed to pay with alternate sources of revenue. That being the regular operating fund from the Recreation Museum and General Fund. So that originated with property tax increases that the district received in 2009 and 2010 with the referendum that the district passed and we used that, that, those funds, that increase in our levied funds to issue those bonds. And so even though we did a refunding, we're still committed to using those revenue sources to pay this bond. So that's what this action is. I think I explained it in the memo as well, but just for any viewers, just to make sure that the viewers watching know that we do not levy property taxes for this bond issue.
Do not levy additional property taxes for it. Yeah.
We do not, we do not levy bond. We do not levy any taxes in our bond fund. It gets paid from our operating revenues.
So is there any discussion relative to this or questions? And this is pretty much standard housekeeping from this point forward until those bonds are paid off.
I move, we approve ordinance 2020-12, abating the levy of property taxes on Urbana Park District General Obligation Park Bonds Alternative Revenue Source Series 2019A.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, we need to do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That passes 4-0 with all present commissioners voting for it. That takes us to item B, action to approve resolution 2020-11, accepting the Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study that we learned about in the study.
As you all are aware from our presentation at the study session, one of the actions we wanted to follow up with is having a resolution of acceptance of the, the report. We're one of the government units that'll be doing the same. So we had a presentation at the study session and at the November UPDEC meeting, we had a joint meeting with the Urbana Group and the Champagne County Forest Preserve District's Advisory Committee as well to hear the presentation. I think their general feelings were in support. And tonight for our board, we'd urge us to accept the plan and accept the resolution as before you. I think I sent out today the updated draft that incorporated a few of the changes that came from our comments. There could be additional comments from some of the other bodies. I wouldn't expect it to substantially change. So I, again, I think staff would recommend that we accept the report in its draft form until it's finally completed. in its draft form until it's finally completed and sent on to Springfield via the resolution in front of you.
Well, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash eleven, accepting the Urbana Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension Study.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, again, a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I did not hear Meredith's aye.
It was there.
It was there, okay.
I can say it again, aye.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I don't know if my internet was, was perpy. And I heard Nancy say aye, so we got, we got three there and I vote aye as well. So that carries four zero. So takes us to item C, review and acceptance of the annual priority projects report to be forwarded to the Urbana Parks Foundation.
As you know, each year staff has, last several years, staff has been putting together a kind of a new approach to our, what we're calling our priority needs. It's kind of a review of all the critical things we have out in the district that need support and fundraising. Ellen and Derek work on that together each year and he's got an update on that. After the, our board reviews it, it gets shared to the Urbana Parks Foundation as well. So our goal is to keep people in the know, make sure we're all focused on the same type of things. And certainly there's flexibility. If we have other needs or interest, staff can adjust as requested. I'll turn it over to Derek and staff.
Great. Share the screen here. See it okay?
Yes.
So as I mentioned, you know, this is a somewhat new format. This is year two. We've used this format. Last year we rolled it out. We felt like having a more similarly reflected our strategic plan would be helpful as our Parks Foundation goes out and tries to secure donations towards our highest need. Years prior, we, we had a pretty exhaustive list of projects and had success with that as well, but, but really focusing in on these four key areas, the tiers from our strategic plan, we thought would be useful moving forward. And I think it has been useful in the last year. So here's our four pillars, health and wellness, you belong here, placemaking and trails and connectivity. Under health and wellness, our focus continues to be on the proposed indoor health and wellness facility. We refined our goal a little bit based upon what we know today, and that is that we're, we have a target of five point three million dollars. Of that, we have a two and a half million dollar grant that we're holding out hope for. So that leaves a balance of, you know, a little bit less than three million dollars to work towards. And as we've talked about already, we've been having some, some considerable recent success in our fundraising efforts, but it's not time to, to stop. In fact, it's, I think we want to continue to, to really work pretty intensely with our fundraising committee and CCS and trying to bring every dollar we can towards the project. And until we, we get news of the grant, we don't have any sort of a deadline from the day that we hear about the grant. Presumably we get good news and we have a grant agreement in place. We have two years to complete the project. The next tier is placemaking. In here, we've got three different categories. The first is Crystal Lake Park and we have an ongoing goal for future path development. We have a turkey trot path that, that's not currently funded. This is the one that would go from where the water feature is, across along the saline and connect up with Broadway. We have an ITAP grant application that is in for the Broadway Avenue Trail, but this would be an additional one that's not funded that we would say is our next highest priority as far as a path project goes. And so if there is interest from a donor or a group of donors to fund a project at Crystal Lake Park, this would be our top priority. At Blair Park, we were successful in landing a, an Ozlad grant. It's going to be replacing the playground, also put in a challenge course, completing two sides of the park that currently don't have a path or a loop path system. Some other improvements like a electronic Yelp play area, a picnic grove are all included in the work that we're currently in design for. And then next year, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-two, we budgeted some money to do some tennis court work, doing some repairs of the tennis court, largely color coding and crack filling and then also replacing the fencing. However, if we wanted to go above and beyond, we could do a mill and resurface of that tennis court that would cost obviously more money. We're also talking about some interest in a tennis plaza replacement. We have at least one donor that's expressed interest in that project. And the, the restroom and pavilion are still in need of rehab. We have some other sidewalks in the park that, that are existing that are four feet wide and we would propose making those wider so that they're eight feet like the rest of the park. And in total, that, that would cost additional seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. In talking with members from our Parks Foundation, we want to wait until we're further through the health and wellness project before we launch this as, as a, as a campaign. They've already identified some tennis alum from Urbana that would be potentially interested in this project. And so looking to initiate these fundraising efforts in twenty twenty-one. That, that's why it's here. And then finally, public art, part of our strategic plan calls for including public art at all parks and facilities. And so have a goal of up to fifty thousand dollars to expand our public art program. And I think last year we, we had some success in this area. Tim, we had at least one piece of sculpture purchased permanently for the district.
Yep, correct.
You belong here, Corky, do you want to talk a little bit about, about you belong here and the thoughts on new scholarship? We have Corky. Well, I, I can cover. So youth scholarship is, is, is an ongoing area of focus for, for the Parks Foundation and was part of our, our campaign for the next century. And so we want to continue to focus efforts towards continuing to, to, to bring more money to our youth scholarship program. We've been fortunate in, in some of the support we've gotten from Carl and we've been able to, to do a lot more in terms of our outreach for you belong here. But, but there's always need. And so we, we want to continue to fund towards that goal. And the final one is trails and connectivity. You all just accepted the, the largely complete extension studies. This is the, the study that would take the K R T from Smith Road. Actually from the terminus of, of, of the current Forest Preserve District ownership, which is a little bit east of Smith Road all the way to downtown. A previous study, the connectivity study, looked at how to connect Weaver Park and East Urbana with the K R T. Both studies had the highest priority to be the missing link, that, that portion of rail bed that's east of Smith Road and has been vacated to acquire that from Norfolk Southern, as well as some properties to make that connection north of Baker's Lane. And so we've had an appraisal done, came in, it was actually eighty-four thousand, but rounding up to eighty-five thousand. And an offer has been made to Norfolk Southern from the three agencies that are working together on this, the Forest Preserve District, City of Urbana and Urbana Park District. There's, at this point, we think that the Forest Preserve District may be believed on, on that, that property. But, but wanted to include it here as a potential for, for any of us to, to raise money towards pending response in Norfolk Southern. There's also the potential for a grant application to fund that or a legislative initiative to fund that. However, we wanted to include it on our focus here for the Parks Foundation to continue to work towards. And that would be the, the highest priority for for trails and connectivity in the K R T moving forward. So that, that's our, our report recommendations. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. And if you all are supportive of these priority projects forwarding on to the Parks Foundation for twenty twenty-one.
Sounds good to me.
Wonderful report. I really appreciate the, the look and the feel of it. Works much better than a long rambling list of needs.
It does indeed.
Yeah. Well, I move to accept and forward the two twenty twenty-one annual priority projects report to the Urbana Parks Foundation.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that passes four zero. And lastly, we'll move on to item D, accept the twenty twenty annual meeting calendar, which we have every right to amend in the future if we want to, but gives us a, a calendar base to start with. Has everybody had a chance to, to look at that amount, think if there's anything particularly out of the ordinary about it?
Michael, the only thing I was gonna add to this, an FYI. Occasionally we've had study sessions in January and not. Typically what we do is if it falls really close to the new year, like January second, it's a little challenging to be off and to get reports done. So we've occasionally not had a January meeting. Obviously this year you can see it's well beyond the new year and very within our means and abilities to do that. So it, that's just probably one of the dates that might flex depending on the, how the calendar rolls out. Certainly schedules and other adjustments can be made, but in case if somebody was wondering that.
I move we accept the twenty twenty annual meeting calendar for regular board meetings, study sessions, joint meetings and UPDAC meetings.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, roll call again, since we're remote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that passes four zero. We did not have any new business removed from the consent agenda. So that takes us to Roman numeral ten, comments from commissioners.
Yes, my comment is this is nicely timed to end just before the ballgame starts.
Well, I don't know if that was on purpose or not, but.
No, but it worked.
It, it did work.
It against Baylor, so.
Maybe that's what Corky is setting up the recording.
No, I wasn't, sorry Derek, I, I heard you call on me just as I was getting back in here, but good job on the scholarship.
Michael, I did have just a compliment to one of our commissioners, all of them of course, but just wanted to let you all know, prior to the meeting, Meredith was willing to do a kind of a debrief session on a cultural intelligence program that she went through at the university and she was excited and it had a lot of applicable you belong here aspects. So just want to thank her for spending a, an additional hour prior to this meeting with our you belong here, our leadership and our co-chairs and Chelsea Proll to learn about that, how we could apply it as a future opportunity. And it sounds like it has some interests with our group. So thank you, Meredith, for that. And again, anybody who has other comments or resources, we're always open. So just wanted to let you all know that.
Oh yeah, I do need to thank Meredith on that and, and toot her horn a little bit. Are you now officially a train the trainers kind of circumstance now?
I'm just an official facilitator. So for example, if we wanted to do the assessment, I can lead people through debriefing of the, the assessment. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Any other comments from commissioners? Well, I would just make the quick comment that we're going through very challenging times and have some very challenging times ahead. And I just am greatly appreciative of the time and effort that the staff has put in trying to roll with the punches as they come along and the great job they're doing it with them.
Yeah, lots of wise choices being made, I think.
I agree.
And a collective thank you and we'll share that with all the staff.
And if there are no further comments from commissioners, we have concluded our agenda for the evening and I will declare us adjourned and.